Okay. It is now 7:00 PM. The September 11th, 2018 Village Board Meeting is open. And I would ask the clerk to call the rules.
Trustee Bingham.
Present.
Trustee Duncan.
Present.
Trustee Grundin.
Here.
Trustee Martenson.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
And Trustee Saylor.
Here.
Okay. Before the pledge of allegiance, I would like to welcome Jeremy Sickler at the end of the table. He is the manager of the Alexander Field Airport. And Katie Martenson is our commissioner that represents the Village of Fort Edwards. So they will be here tonight for the quarterly report on things new at the airport. And there's a lot of stuff going on out there. So if you're pleased or I pleased with the pledge of allegiance. Edward, I ask you to bear with me. Tonight, for the moment of silence, I would like to honor a longtime village trustee that passed away on August 31st. James Squeak Zerflue was born on January 1st, 1944, and he passed away August 31st of this year. He began his work in the village in 1966, and he retired on December 31st, 2005. He was kiddingly called Mr. Parks, as Jeff, you back there, you sure would know. He kept the parks in magnificent shape and was also the caretaker of the cemetery. And when Jim retired, he gave an interview to the newspaper, and he made the statement that mowing the cemetery was always his favorite job because none of his residents out there complained about him doing his job. So in Squeak's honor, I would ask you to, after the pledge, have a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last board meeting. Motion by Trustee Duncan.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Martenson. Discussion. All those in favor, say the five or say the nine.
Aye.
Both. That carries. Public comments on agenda items. Nobody wishes to speak again tonight. Maybe that's an indication I talk too much, so I'll try and hold it down. President's report, I have nothing. My concern, Mike will bring up later on, under his village administrator report. So no further ado, we are going to go into the airport commission. And the first thing would be, is there any comments on the airport proceedings from previous minutes? Okay. Hearing no requests to speak or any questions on that. Jeremy, I'm going to turn it over to you and to Katie for an update on the airport. And I saw two jets when I was out there today, and I thought I was at Central Wisconsin Airport. And these things were huge.
It was a busy day today, which is good. They had some kind of a golf outing in San Valley.
And also, without objection on suspended rules of Green's presentation, if you have a question, feel free to ask.
Yeah. In fact, I prefer to start out that way. Are there any questions or anything I can answer to start before I get into my presentation? Okay. Well, as Mr. President said, yes, there are quite a few things going on at the airport. I'll start with the development. I think since the last time I was here, we've concluded two projects. Last fall's project and then this project that started this spring. Both of which went off successfully. We've been using the partial parallel taxiway from last fall all winter long, and then the completion of that parallel taxiway and the reconstructed runway, which is the east-west runway. We're looking at map of it. For about, I'd say about a month, that one's been open now. All new asphalt on the base and all new lighting. So if you drive by the airport tonight and you see all the lights on, it looks quite a bit different because it's all new LED lighting. That was, final inspection for that project was on August 8th. There's just a few, a handful of minor little things about that project that need to be finished yet this year. Some landscaping issues and other minor discrepancies that were identified. So just this week, the ground was broken, literally. Not the ceremonial groundbreaking, but the literal groundbreaking took place this week on the projects that will be this fall. And those are phase, excuse me. Yeah. I would call it phase three of this four-phase project that we're doing out there, which is the projects that are funded by that state grant that we got that was approved last November, September in the state 2018 biennial budget. That's the $4 million that the airport got. The biggest component of that project is the expansion of the apron, built, basically building a larger parking lot for aircraft out there. And then the long runway, the main runway that's out there, it also is, it's an old piece of asphalt that was built in the late 80s. So it's nearing the end of its useful life. That runway is going to be, rather than being reconstructed, which is a long and invasive process, they're just going to mill that, the surface of that runway and overlay that, which is a relatively quick process. It's still going to cause some delays and some outages, but it will still, it will only be for a couple of weeks, and then that runway will be ready to use again next year right away with a brand-new surface. So a lot of new asphalt, a lot more plowing, if the commission so chooses to plow all that asphalt. Because I could, I could see justification for not needing to plow it all winter because honestly, all the use of it is in the summer. So we'll, we have some, some things to consider for plowing for this, for this upcoming plowing season. The commission did, well, it seems like when you really need money, it's never there. And then when it starts raining, it pours. Because the commission was given an opportunity to leverage some of its own money to save some of, to save a large portion of that $4 million. And it was a wise move on the commission's behalf, I believe, because that $4 million from the state has far less restrictions on it than money that comes through other state channels or federal channels, especially federal channels. There's a lot of, a lot of red tape for federal-funded projects. So by spending some of the commission's own money, there's a reserve fund or reserves that have been built up over the years totaling roughly $300,000. The commission chose to spend about 160 of that as its 5% share of one of the projects that was originally going to be covered by, out of the $4 million, it was about an $800,000 project. So what that means is the commission will pay 20%, 20% of that $800,000 preserving the, preserving that $800,000 to be spent on something else. So like I said, a little bit of leveraging local money to preserve more, larger government entity money. And that is in the hopes of still preserving enough of that $4 million to build a hangar, which wouldn't be eligible for federal or other state, state funding that comes through other avenues. So the most flexible money is being preserved for future endeavors. So there is still potential for more construction out there, yet next year, certainly no later than 2020, if the commission, if everything works out and the commission decides to move forward with a hangar.
Commission thinking about putting up any more hangars, larger sizes, some of these jets?
That's what the preservation.
If I had a jet that big, I wouldn't want a parked outside.
Right. That's the, my, my understanding is that's the hope of the preservation of that money that is more flexible because it could be spent on hangars rather than, so there's another avenue, another pot of state money that's going to build, builds a surface that was going to be spent or was going to be built up of that $4 million. It's honestly, it's just, it's a little bit of accounting trickery, if you want to say, where the money comes from and what it can be spent on. Ultimately, it was, it's going to, it's going to mean that the commission is going to get more money for its, for its continued development.
And there's no deadline on how long you have to spend that 4 million?
There hasn't been one, as of yet, nobody's told us that, like, so I thought that at one point, too, like, if it had to be spent within the biennial, but it's my understanding as of now, we haven't heard that from the local legislators. And there, yeah, there's many other projects out there that extend beyond the, the end of their budget period. So that's where we're at with that project. And like I said, that one, literally, they started scraping back the topsoil today. And it's amazing when those big machines get their blades in the ground, how quickly that stuff happens. It's a totally different figure, a totally different look over there already. So then when that project is going to be done this fall, at least the vast majority of it, they had a very aggressive timeline for that project, obviously, starting as late as it did. They've only got about a month and a half to build it, realistically, because mid to late October weather could, could slow that down. So they've got a 45-day construction period for that. So it's, it's very aggressive. They're expecting to be working more or less sunup to sundown once, once, once everything gets rolling out there, just to make sure that happens. Lot of asphalt, like I said, that big runway, 5,500 feet long, 100 feet wide. And then 40,000 square yards of asphalt on the apron. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a one heck of a lot of asphalt going to be put in out there this fall. Pavers will be busy. My understanding is they're going to make sure that there's two papers out here when it's time to do it. Once that's done, well, then we go into our winter dormancy season and let that asphalt, that new asphalt kind of cure over the winter. Then next spring, the federal project kicks in, which is going to be a full-length parallel taxiway. I wish I would have brought a poster, but I can send a, I can send a small graphic over for each of you to be, you know, distribute among yourselves. But there will be a full-length parallel taxiway to the long runway. And that's, today was a perfect example of how and why we needed it because as it is now, they've got to stop, turn 180 degrees in what's called back taxi to midfield where they can get off toward the apron area by the, by the terminal building. And there was one plane on its way out and one plane on its, on its way in, and they were both, you could hear them on the radio, okay, what do you want to do? What are we going to do? What should I do? And there was some indecisiveness.
And they don't like that.
Well, no, not when you've got planes whose wingstands are 70 feet and they can't see the ends of their wings. So on busier days, when there is the potential for insurances like that, then we shouldn't have to worry about that after next spring's project, which is the FAA-funded parallel taxiway to the full-length runway. And that will be lit, too. So by the end of next year, I say it all the time, we're going to have, without a question, the newest airport in the whole state, possibly in the Great Lakes region, because we're going to have, all of our operating surfaces are going to be brand-new, all of our lighting is going to be brand-new, I mean, within, within a couple of years.
So. I know when I was still commissioner before Katie replaced me, a few of us, a couple times, we had bantered and back and forth weather. Years ago, we had the, the airline come in, you know, I don't know what, who it was, Mid State or whatever they called them way back then. Is there any, is that thought of anymore, or is it something that we'll have to wait and see?
That would be something obviously demand-driven, considering that the nearest airport that services airlines is only about an hour away from us, it seems a little far-fetched. What's very reasonable or very likely to happen is some kind of a, and they're working on, San Valley and me and one operator out of Chicago have been working on, almost like a scheduled charter, an eight or 10-person aircraft that would fly a couple of routes a week between here and maybe Chicago or the Twin Cities. The places where we find the most activity coming from, and believe it or not, a ton of people flying from the Chicago area, Twin Cities area, flying 30 to 40 minutes to get here, which seems kind of absurd to me when you can drive it in three to four hours. But if you've got the plane, you may as well use it, I guess. But something like that seems logical, however, it's still, I think it'd be a long-term plan, and it's very much in its enthusiasm now. So that's all the development. I'm probably leaving out a ton of things, and I was trying to be as brief as I could. Is there any questions or any ideas or thoughts? Or at the worst case, is, is there any misconceptions that I can help to straighten out? Because I hear a lot of, I still hear a lot, well, when are you going to expand? Are you going to be buying my house? I live right across the road. And I'm, well, that's not exactly what we're doing now. But you know, there's different interpretations of the word expansion, and some people still believe that means we're buying out a bunch of property around the airport. So I do as much as I can in public education and outreach. Yes.
Any neighborhood complaints about the jets, frequency of jets, the noise of jets?
Last year, I think when, when, when it first started happening, so it would have been late '16 and last year, there was quite a bit. This year, I haven't, haven't heard anything.
An acceptance, maybe?
Yeah. I don't believe it's really even that invasive in the neighborhoods around there. When I knew some of the bigger ones were taking off, I would go to some various areas, or somebody said they lived on Third and Oak Lawn, or whatever the heck they said they lived on, and that jet came right over the top of my house. And so I'd go over there and sit nearby their house just to see how invasive it really was. I hate to downplay the importance of somebody's complaint, but sometimes I think to myself, well, that's what they're complaining about. It seems kind of, kind of wishy-washy, if you want to say. The FAA, some people complained to the FAA last year, and the FAA's noise abatement procedures are based on an average 24-hour exposure, not, not merely a once every couple hours or one a day, you know. So the average exposure for these people is very, very low on the FAA's exposure continuum. So like I said, I hate to make it sound like it's not important, however, it's, it might not be as exaggerated as some, some may, may, used to make it sound. This year, I haven't heard a single complaint, so.
Just tell them it used to be a German prison camp, so which, which did they prefer, the Oath or the prison camp?
Yeah, POW camp.
Yeah.
Good point.
Jeremy, if you wouldn't, if you didn't, if, why interrupt about the municipal contribution?
Yes.
You just pointed that. And then I was looking at this while you were talking a little bit, wow, has this changed the fuel?
Yeah. So those were a couple of the things that I thought of, nothing else. The few things that you guys might like to take away from this and tell other people is just a few gallons numbers. That's what that is, four years, three and a half years, this year and the three previous years. If the numbers speak for themselves, I don't need to explain to you what you're looking at. That's pretty obvious that we're, we're growing quite substantially.
What's a hundred?
Hundred volt is 100-octane fuel. It's got, it's still has, it's the one and only legal leaded fuel that's still out there because many of these aircraft that were built in the 40s, 50s, 60s, 70s still need that lead to lubricate them. So that's one, that's avgas, aviation gas is another phrase for it, and jet fuel, of course. You guys understand what that is.
How would that burn in a 64 Camaro?
It burns excellent in a lot of things, actually. As long as you're not using it on the road.
I would never do anything.
No.
Right, chief?
I'm saying what?
So yeah, the fuel sales, I have to be expected there, just continuing to grow. And I think it's reasonable to assume that that will continue to be the case. So that gets, I didn't bring a copy of my budget for everybody, but I know it's been sent to a couple of you commissioners, and if you want more specific information. But as of right now, fuel sale profit has been nearly $70,000 for the airport. And then a couple other revenues that we never had before, catering, which we never provided before, and ramp fees, which we never charged before. Ramp fees, we've, we've got near 8,000 in ramp fee revenue and nearly 2,000 in catering revenue that was, you know, revenues that we never had prior to this year. So again, all impacts of the jet traffic that's coming in. That's about it. I wanted to stick from the budget. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was, yes, you see the municipal contribution breakdowns and the minimal changes that were, that it took place as a result of equalized value changes in the past year. So I guess the Village of Fort Edwards, 7894, is what I would hope that you guys would approve to continue from your support for the airport commission.
That will be coming up, the workshops, the budget workshops will be starting very shortly, Madam Chair.
Yes, it will.
Okay. Commissioner Martenson, you have anything?
I don't. The only thing I would say is when we were going back and forth, it did take a couple interim meetings to figure out what to do with that money. I would say Matt from the BOA, I mean, helped him big time, kind of helped guide us as a, he really, they, as far as we really first went through this process, really led us in a good direction and fought for us for other funding sources to be able to maybe keep some of that money back, to be able to do some of the stuff that they wouldn't have been able to fund for us in the future. And that was kind of, we were kind of demanding at the last minute there. We were kind of like changing stuff up on him, and he was, they were on it as far as MSA and both Matt were really, really helpful, or especially someone that we knew that didn't really have any clue what to do with.
I had talked with Assemblyman Krug and Senator Keston, and I know firsthand, not from them, that they were pretty instrumental in bringing $4 million to Central Wisconsin.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, we owe them a debt of gratitude, for sure, because of their, Senator Keston, in fact, I guess at one, one meeting, he was attempting to solicit other people's votes for that particular, that particular legislation. He made everybody and everybody that attended his caucus airplane-shaped cookies to remind them to vote for the airport, so.
I thought you were going to say you took a 10-pound bag of potatoes from the farm. Or a free round of golf at San Valley. Yeah, there you go. Any questions for anybody before we wrap her up? If not, Jeremy, Katie, I really appreciate it. And you'll be due back in December, but that meeting is also the budget hearing night, so we might have to postpone you until 2019 in January. So thank you very much for coming.
Thanks for the invitation.
Chief, you can. Thank you for being here. Alrighty, we are going to go to Chairman Saylor. Sir.
We had a meeting on August 21st. Talked about a few things. We discussed some projects. Everybody knows that the bunker is repaved. All that work is done. They're still working on some alley stuff right now, about the patches are. And the new road in the cemetery is complete as of right now. The new truck route signs are up. We talked about some maintenance of the disc golf, the trash and recycling notification, which we'll discuss more in the next upcoming meeting. But we have a motion to approve the splash pad contract with, I make a motion to approve the splash pad contract with MSA.
Motion by Chairman Saylor to approve the splash pad contract with MSA. Do you have a second? Seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Anything you or Todd would like to add to this at this time?
Just that this contract essentially takes us from the design phase to bidding to construction administration and observing construction, make sure those plans that are developed get implemented properly. Payment of this contract comes out of our grant foundation. So this gets us on pace to have our splash pad open next summer.
Okay. Todd?
No, I included a summary of, you know, what's going on, and didn't update it there. Pretty good, pretty good summary.
Thank you. Mr. President. Can I, I can, can I add an amendment to that motion? Or is that? Forty-two. You can. Nick will correct me if I'm incorrect. You have to list the amendment to the motion. It'll have to have a second. We will discuss the mo, the amendment and then vote on the amendment. And if it fails, then we are back to the original. If it passes, then we go forward. Yeah, I would like to amend that motion to include that at no time in the future does that project exceed $500,000. Not zero, not a penny over $500,000.
Have a second, then.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Bingham. If, Diane, would you read back with you, please?
A motion to include at no time in the future does that project exceed $500,000.
And a second by Trustee Grundin. Discussion on the amendment.
Is this a statement without a deadline? I'm not sure I understand. Are you saying by the time it's built next July, you're not including anything in a budget in future years?
Well, I had to say that that $500,000 is to build the splash pad. So of course, that's going to be $500,000 for that. But as time goes, we might want to add other amenities. We might want to add a bathroom or do a maintenance. So of course, it's not going to come out of the $500,000. That's going to be, $500,000 is for the design and for the building of the splash pad.
That within the confines of this contract, we do not exceed $500,000.
I assume the money's being held in an interest-bearing account?
Mm-hmm.
So we're going to end up with actual cash left. Moreover, if we end up having what we really want and it comes in at $500,000 or $505,000, the village is not going, is going to be precluded from deciding that it wants to fork in another five grand if needed?
Yes. Yes. Well, I do not want any village money going into the implementation of this splash pad.
We spend how much every year for a pool?
$300,000, about?
Yeah.
Jeff, do you remember?
It was, it was that.
The maintenance, I believe, was between $40,000 and $50,000 a year.
Okay. All right. Then I was way off. Well, my thing is, if, if, you know, when this project is done and it comes under, let's just say for sake of argument, $508,000, but we've already accrued $10,000 in interest. To me, that $10,000 is part of the original 500. That's my looking at it. I understand that. I mean, that's technically not village money, you know, that we got. Okay.
Can I make a point of clarification?
Sure.
So for the, for the purposes of this agreement, I mean, MSA is not putting shovels in the ground. I mean, MSA is doing professional, professional consulting services. And while the estimated fee that they have listed here is, is an estimate, I would suggest that if the concerns are about the project going over $500,000, that the MSA contract is probably not going to be the, the point that puts it over because this is something that needs to be done in advance of any, any construction, any actual construction. I think at that point, a contract with the company doing the construction can be limited in such a way. But I guess my, I want to make sure everybody understands that we're talking about the professional services here that just cover the design and the really overseeing the engineering from a professional standpoint of the, of the project, not the, not the actual putting up of structures, digging of holes and so forth.
So at that time, what you're saying is, I would introduce a motion that we not go over $440,000 because we spent, or $430,000 because we spent. We're getting into it. We're going to spend $66,000. We're in it. We're in it, you know? I guess what I'm saying at this point, going forward, I don't care where the costs are. I think we should be limited so that the village doesn't incur cost in excess of, and I will agree that interest, outside of the interest-bearing money, I would agree with that, additional funds into this project. Going in the future, if it's built, yes, there's going to be maintenance, there's going to be budgeted amounts, and I understand that also. But I'm just saying initially, this $500,000, Wisconsin Rapids hit 750, putting it up. Now, they went big time, they put up a shelter, and they did a lot of stuff, but they spent $750,000 on their splash pad. And I guess, I don't want to get into that when, at a time when we don't have a lot of money and we're looking for money to finish the project, and we've got it three-quarters done. done and there's pressure to spend another $100,000 that we don't have. I wanna stop that right here, right now, that we don't get into that conundrum.
Well, I'm sorry, but I think I'm mature and adult enough to make decisions without having to create some childish little mechanism to say, "We're not spending anything more than." I think we set budgets, we spend money, we handle stuff properly for the village. We can make that determination. We don't need to have an artificial mechanism to limit how we spend it.
Well, with all due respect, Mr. Duncan, I don't think it's a childish mechanism. It's done quite frequently with projects, and if you do exceed, then you're expected to pay a penalty or, or something to occur. So, I would disagree with your assessment. Just at this point, I'm concerned about the financial impact of this on the Village of Fort Edwards. Bottom line. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I'm done. Without objection, Todd, you wanted to say something that I think should be recognized. Go ahead.
Both of the other two municipalities that, all the other three, you know, Wisconsin Rapids did have more stuff, but Roman, Nacusa, they both added things on at their leisure in some cases to, I think both of theirs were a little bit above. But I think this, what needs to happen is this, this project needs to be shaped to fit that budget. In both of those other projects, we bid alternates on there, like additive alternates such as a shade structure, stuff like that, benches, seating, trashcans, drinking fountains. You see what the bids are and you see where they come in, and then you guys get to decide what to award, and that's where, where you guys ultimately get to decide where to award this thing. I think if this is our ultimate goal, that, you know, not a penny more, we need to be very conservative on the front end, thinking about bidding economy and contingency on the project, because what if we hit something down in the ground or something isn't exactly where it is? I haven't had really anything on any of the other projects where it's been, geez, this thing isn't exactly what we thought it was gonna be. So, there's been very little change order or contingency stuff used up during construction, but I guess I would say that bids have fluctuated a little bit, you know, from, one was a lot cheaper than the other one, you know, just for, for the general installation and construction, depending on who got it.
Do most of those bids or contracts have an escalator provision? In other words?
No.
So, what I'm saying is, is if somebody bids and they're gonna put in, pipe in, and they're using PVC, and now we have hurricanes along the east coast and all PVC prices go through the roof because of the demand, they're locked in at that?
They're locked in at the time of bid.
Right.
Okay.
And their bid's good for 60 days. But you guys have, I mean, and if the, if the project, let's say that, let's say we bid the project and it comes in at $425,000, we've already got 66 in with MSA, and there's gonna be another couple thousand dollars of geotechnical work. Let's just say that you guys are nervous about that and you don't wanna award it. We can make some tweaks and rebid it prior to. You don't have to award it. That's where we have to make the decision.
I would also just like to clarify that when I was clarifying the contract, I wasn't arguing against anybody's point or in favor of anybody else, just so there's no confusion about that.
Okay. I'm not sure what happens, and maybe this, I'm not sure what happens with any money that's left over in that account. I assume it could be used for maintenance in the future, but that's something I might check with Legacy, too.
All I know is if I had to put my name on it, you know, and if we got $10,000 in there, we'll probably, you know, figure out a way to do it. That's a tweaking, absolutely.
And that's, and those things can even be done with change orders at the end, like, well, let's add a little bit of concrete here, or let's make this, beautify this, let's put some landscaping in there. Right.
Just on that point, I understand the contract with Legacy is pretty flexible in terms of, but it would be beneficial for MSA to familiarize themselves with that, too, before getting into the subject and so forth.
If Mike had something to copy of that.
Okay, everything's back on the table. Any trustees wishing to speak further? If not, we, I would ask the clerk to read the amendment one more time. Oh, I'm sorry, Eric, go ahead.
So, Todd, you guys have been involved in Nacusa, the Rome, and Rapids.
Yeah.
It's all the same, they're all, I mean.
None of them are the same.
But I mean, it's the, you got a pot of money and then that's where you're going. It's not like this is your first time, right off the boat, you're gonna make whatever. So, we've talked about this in the past, at $500,000, I wanna say with CRS and all the other contractors and stuff, the splash pad itself was only like $300,000 or something. And it's all the other amenities that you wanna add.
On Rome, they're, they direct purchase, they don't have to pay the tax, and they direct, and so that it's all there. So, we decided what the thing was gonna look like, and then they direct purchased the equipment. Theirs was like a hundred grand. Nacusa's was 118,000 for their equipment. Then we paid the contractor to install the splash pad and the concrete in those, in those appearances, and that was almost identical on both of them, you know, right around another hundred grand. So, you're probably looking at, at two and a quarter, and that's just for that center splash pad area, and then you got some area around it and a connection sidewalk at a minimum, utilities, a valve mantle, a meter mantle. Those are things that are necessary, but I'm just talking about just the splash pad itself there. So, there's some things that are going to be necessary, but we can obviously, you know, work to make the, the excess stuff, alternates.
John, you have the motion here, a second? And if the clerk could read it one quick time for my full line, then we will vote.
To amend the motion to include at no time in the future does the project exceed $500,000.
Okay, you heard the motion, the amended motion read again. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed?
Aye or nay?
I, I was an aye. Was catching up. I was an aye.
Aye what? An aye to, for the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, clerk, is that three to three? And I vote in a negative. So, we are back to the original motion to approve the splash pad contract with MSA. Yes, go ahead.
I just want a clarification on the procedure from Mike regarding the, I guess amendments, the, the strikeouts and initials on the contract. Is there a, is that, has that been done? Is that gonna be done? Is there?
Joe has the original with him, with, with the initials from MSA that was brought proceeding.
Oh, okay, I see. I saw.
They're both the same.
Okay, that's fair enough. I have nothing else to say about unless anybody has any questions about that. So, I just wanted to make sure it's on. Thank you.
Where was I? Back to the original motion. The original motion, the original motion again was by who?
Second by Mitchell. To approve the splash pad contract with MSA.
Why don't you just read it whole for me? If you would, Madam Clerk.
The motion made by Trustee Saylor, seconded by Trustee Mitchell, to approve the splash pad contract with MSA.
You've heard the motion, Randy? Is there any further discussion on this part?
I just have one, one specific question. We're voting on the MSA splash pad contract. That's it. This contract for $66,610.
Yes. Correct, Mr. Vice President?
Thank you.
That's what I'm reading.
Well, I just wanna clarify that.
I didn't mean to go to another attorney, you know.
I may be an attorney, but you're not asking me as an attorney.
I can't beat the rate, though, $25 right now for your three hours. Okay, without further ado, all those in favor of approving the MSA contract, splash pad contract with MSA will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Aye. And motion, motion carries.
I still got more stuff. Okay, so, next thing is, is I make a motion to approve the general engineering service contract with MSA.
Is that you again?
I can do it. I'm central for it.
Second.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Motion by Saylor, second by Duncan. Are there any suspicion amongst trustees? Without objection, we go off table.
So, what it really is, is it's a, it's a general terms and conditions contract. It allows us to do task orders back and forth. The task orders are performed at a maximum value of $75,000. Those are basically a sheet of paper that gets signed, and they go with the general terms and conditions of that, of that general services agreement. The general services agreement says that I would be your liaison for the Village of Fort Edwards. Many municipalities that, once we have these general services agreement like this, we might do a task order for, an annual 2019, general services for, they might budget $5,000 or $10,000. And it's for just general stuff that comes up, and once approved by the president, the board, administrator, depending on what your, your different approval levels are, to say, "Hey, MSA, can you help us out with this?" We add a line under there as a task, and then we can charge you for those little things, other projects, like, let's say there's a, there's a street project, you wanna do a grant application. Those things are set up as separate task orders under that. Yes, Mr. Bingham?
But we're also allowed to go to other engineering services.
Yes.
Right, so we're not committed just there. Okay, thank you. Mike, have any add on this?
As permission, but on a couple little things. This contract is, you know, the term of the agreement through the end of the year, and then it renews, but if we wanna get out of it, we just give, we give a 30-day notice and we can get out of the contract. So, that, that's important. Some of the things MSA has been working with us on, one of the things is helping with their capital improvement program, estimating costs for 2019 and beyond projects, and they've been working with us on those estimates at no charge.
Anybody else? Okay, we will vote. All those in favor of approving the general engineering services contract with MSA will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Nay.
And John was a nay. Okay, and that passes. Anything else? Eric?
That's it.
All right, Chairman Duncan, pit committee.
Are there any questions in regards to amendments of the pit committee? Hearing that, then I'm gonna move to approve the resolution of the 2018-6 supporting amendment of the TID number two.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Duncan, second by Trustee Grunden, to approve the TID project plan, TID to tax, let me start over. Resolution approving project plan amendment number one to tax incremental district number two. Discussion.
This is essentially amends the boundaries of the TID to ensure that we don't have so much property that is of value to the village, all the units of government of the village, school, desert, technical college are, can still be used for their general tax levy. There's been complicated site with warehouse, so with this boundary amendment, that keeps the warehouse outside of the district, which is a benefit to all the units of government. Other thing that's, main thing is in here is updating of the eligible projects list that does not commit us to doing the projects, it just says, "These are, these are eligible provided we have the funds to do it."
Part of the biggest aspect is, is taking the warehouse out and adding the Y. So, anything around the Y, which what I assume would include the area where the splash pad may have ultimately, correct?
I don't believe it includes that, but we, but we have to also keep in mind that projects within a half mile of the TID boundary are eligible for TIF funding. So, downtown would be an eligible area for, for project funding.
Is the splash pad area not being eligible because we own it?
Well, if we did, it's in the, yeah.
He's like, yeah, yeah.
It wouldn't be the splash pad itself, though. What you could do is, is any roads, parking in the area, that stuff could all be utilized as part of that.
Just within that half mile of the TID.
May I add to discussion? Hearing no request to speak, all those in favor of the motion will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? That motion carries.
And I believe that's all I have.
Anything else?
Nope. I have no further comment or anything else to present, so.
Okay, thank you. Chairman Martinson, public safety.
Public safety met on August 21st, and any questions on the minutes from the meeting? With that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve the upcoming training to include Officer Lamb defense and arrest tactics trainer, training, and Officer Lamb child maltreatment summit, and Officer Jedzwozki crisis intervention training.
Second. Motion by Chairman Martinson, second by Trustee Bingham, to approve the motion on police department training as written. Questions? Is that, posited?
Yes.
Where is the training?
The instructor training for Officer Lamb, I believe, is in Appleton, child maltreatment summit is in Marshfield, and the crisis intervention training would be at Midstate Technical College.
Is Mrs. Sis put that on yet?
Yes.
She does a good job. Okay, any other?
I just want to add one thing, if I might, if I may. I believe that when we had the discussion regarding the two-day training over in Appleton, you thought that there probably wouldn't be an overnight stay. Am I correct? I mean, it is an option.
It is an option for him because of the distance. However, just based on his preferences that he's shown in the past, I don't believe that he would. But it's up to him.
I seen him in Twin Cities one time. He did stay overnight there, but I don't know how he likes to.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? That motion carries.
That's all I have. Public safety.
Okey-dokey. Chairman Martinson again, finance and human resource committee.
Finance and human resource met on September 6th, and we had a lengthy meeting, discussion from the fire department volunteers, and which will be carried forward with more discussion. I did appoint, I did appoint Mr. Bingham as the representative for the village board, and then there will be two individuals that will be appointed by the fire department, and there will be conversation regarding future wages, and that will then be brought back to the committee. And then that information will then be, if a decision is made, that will be brought to the board at a later date. Other than that, I would like to make a motion to approve payment of the bills.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Martinson to approve payment of the bills. Second?
Second.
Oh, you're too quick for me. Okay, Martinson.
It's not hard.
I'll talk later. The motion by Chairman Martinson, second by Trustee Duncan, approve payment of the bills. Discussion. All those in favor, signify. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First time I've been speechless at a board meeting, congratulations.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve the journal entries of the previous month. Second.
Motion by Chairman Martinson, second by trustee Duncan to approve the entry, journal entries, approval of the journal entries of the previous month. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fire truck financing in the amount of $468,233. That financing will be with NUCUS, Port Edward State Bank, it'll be 10-year financing at a rate of 3.5%.
Motion by Chairman Martinson, second by trustee Grunden, to approve the fire truck financing as written. Discussion.
I just want to add, I'm very pleased that it's a locally owned bank that we were able to do business with. Thank you.
I would like to thank Administrator Croneman for his work in reaching out to various other lending institutions and coming up with this resolution for us. I think that it was a, you put some time into it, and I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase of the fire truck as written signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm just going to, okay, one abstain.
And last motion is to approve resolution 2018-7, setting the minimum unassigned general fund balance at 20%.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Martinson, second by trustee Duncan, to approve the village board resolution, setting the minimum unassigned general fund balance as written on the resolution. Is there any discussion?
So I have a win. It's already what we're doing.
Yes.
The policy says 5%, we've been doing 20, we're just changing the policy. That's it.
Right.
Nothing different.
We're going to keep doing what we're doing, and this is a recommendation, just a policy recommendation from our, from our auditor, and so when it comes to what we're doing, we're, we're doing great in that area.
We have been set very low, but we have never been down there either.
Correct.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing no requests, all those in favor of the resolution will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, Chairman Martinson, anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, let me sign my name here, don't forget to do that. Someone at this board described some... Unfinished business from previous meetings, I have nothing. Nothing was listed as new business, anything crop up in the meantime? I have nothing.
What I have is just some information.
You don't do that under your administrator.
Oh, okay, I thought you were moving on to that item.
All right. Report from the village administrator.
What was it, last week, or the...
Jim?
Last week, August, the new carts for the waste and recycling were delivered. This brochure was included with the carts, and this outlines the process. On the back, there is a schedule here, the, the entire village is now being picked up on Wednesdays. The second Wednesday of the month is bulk waste collection, and residents will need to call Kim at the village and give, let her know the address of where the bulk pickup is, and that's going to need to be into Kim by 4:00 PM the Friday before that second, second Tuesday. So, get your request into Kim before the weekend, so...
Can you explain what bulk items are?
Bulk is mattresses, furniture, other items too large, it's not construction items, tires, appliances, electronics. So, if, if there is any questions, people can give me a call.
Mike, you mentioned Tuesday, how did you mention that in the context of Tuesday?
Did I say Tuesday?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies, I, it's Wednesday, it's the, it's the second Wednesday of the month for bulk collection, second Wednesday.
And you have to notify village by?
The Friday before, the Friday before. I misspoke on that. But the schedule, big thing is, the schedule's on the back of the brochure here, we have extra copies at the municipal building, if people want a copy, they can pick one up.
Has everybody gotten one that did not get the correct one?
That we know of, there may be some unique situations out there that we just hung out about, but we did get those, there were some unique situations out there, and we were notified and promptly responded.
Because I don't think I ever got one.
A cart?
Attached to you. Oh, no, I, no, it's not, no. No, mine was...
Your brochure?
Yes.
Oh, the brochure.
The correct one.
We, the tough part, you know, we had some of the brochures, the incorrect brochures delivered to parts of the village. We tried to assess what aspects those were, what parts of the village that was, and someone from Advance dispensed one around and hand-delivered the appropriate brochure to those areas. No, we did not, I'm not sure that we did, and that's why we have these available amendments.
Anything else? Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, the part about construction materials not allowed to be picked up, in the past, if you did your own project at home, you put it out and it was picked up, that's no longer going to be that?
They were not, if they picked it up, they were not supposed to pick it up.
But I thought it was clarified that if it's not a contractor, if you're doing it yourself, it goes out as trash. Does anybody?
My understanding, construction materials are construction materials.
That's where you, you get a firm that'll part it away for you, and you pay the tipping fee. That was my understanding.
Right, or it's up to you to take it up to the landfill directly.
Correct.
So that, that's a change, that I think kind of, I didn't, we didn't have any discussion about it, because it was, and I called, and, because we have had over the years different projects, and as long as it's, if you have a contractor, they take it. If it's yours, they'll pick it up.
I don't want my elk, I'm driving my elk, if it's there Thursday morning or whatever, I don't...
And he's the chairman of the CIRK.
I can just envision all kinds of potential issues as to what is and is not construction material.
Right.
And so, I think this is going to be...
That's a good question. I think more often than not, they're probably taking it.
I mean, for instance, is, are paint cans construction material?
No, they're hazardous.
If they're empty?
They're hazardous.
If they're in a black bag, and you can't, can, do they get taken?
Well, I think it's my job as the presider to get us back on course here.
Very good.
What was I going to do? Oh, Diane, report from clerk treasurer.
No, nothing.
Nothing? Okay, trustee comments? Would you have something for the CIRK meeting next Tuesday on Tierra's situation?
It's on the agenda, the proposed agenda right now. It's on the proposal, okay, great, great.
Did you say Tierra's situation?
Yeah, yeah.
I have a situation...
You have construction situation. Now I'm being picked on for... Okay, I am closing trustee comments. Why? Because I can. All righty. Village Board meeting from September 12th to October 9th, beginning on Tuesday, September 18th at 5:00 PM, CIRK will meet in the municipal building, and there is rather an interesting agenda that night, so, it'll be on the website, posted at the three spots around, you might want to come down for that. Thursday, we go to September 27th, at 4:30 PM, we have the plan commission, and Mr. Vice President, I believe we have three items that will be looked at at the plan commission. Mike?
Couple, couple of that, one of them is something here, but...
That's right, that's right. Then also on Thursday...
I have them in advance of the meeting, so that I know what I'm looking at.
Yes. Thursday, 27th at 5 o'clock, the PIT meeting will, the PIT committee will meet then, also in the municipal building, and then on Thursday, September 27th at 6:00 PM, the public safety committee will meet, and thank you for Chairman Martinson for moving your regular scheduled meeting back for us.
Absolutely.
Then on Thursday, October 4th, 5:00 PM, municipal building will be the Finance and Human Resource Committee, and then Tuesday, October 9th, 7:00 PM, right here at Edmonds Alexander Park, the October village board meeting will take place. Yes?
Did we want to mention anything about the dates?
That would be a good idea, I guess, for the other trustees that are on FHR. Trustee Markerson, you have the floor for those.
Regarding our budget meetings that we have set, they are set for October 3rd, that's 5:00 PM, and October 4th, and that'll be right after the regular monthly meeting, so, which is at 5:00, so hopefully we'll be over and done with that, and we can get on with the budget meeting. So the 3rd and the 4th will be the budget meetings.
And then on October 9th, at that meeting, the board as a whole will preview it, and anything that the board kicks back to FHR, then they will go back and correct it and bring it back. And Mike, are we back to December for the public hearing on the budget?
I think so, I think so, with some of the...
As you mentioned, the second Tuesday in November.
Yes, we're pushed back for our discussion at the FHR meeting, due to staffing issues and scheduling overall to get everyone to meet, that's better to go to that.
Okay, very good. So Diane's got those down, thank you. Anything else from anybody? Entertained a motion to adjourn. So trustee Duncan, second by trustee Sailor, we stand adjourned.